Fred.
Welcome to the May 7, 2025 Lowell School Committee Meeting, City Hall, 6:30. Joining you is the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States, the republic for which it stands, liberty, and justice for all. Ron Corpius, call the roll.
Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Mr. Bahu.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Del Rossi.
Here.
Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Mr. Lay.
Yeah.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Six present.
Seven, right? Seven, everybody's here, right?
Huh?
Everybody's here, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did I say six?
Yeah, sorry. Ms. Pratt, good to see you tonight, thanks for being here. Section three, special Lowell business, 3.1, spotlight on excellence, early college programs. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I could rattle on here, but I think you're going to learn very soon how much we value and get wonderful value from our terrific early college program for which we are grateful for the support of Middlesex Community College, whose president, Phil Sisson, I notice is in the audience and may have an opportunity to address us. I'm going to begin first with Heather Bruner, who is a career, a college and career counselor at Lowell High School, and she is our early college wizard and will explain to you. Ms. Bruner?
Thank you very much, Superintendent Skinner. Thank you for having us here tonight. I have President Jaska Rae with me as well, the class of 2025 president at Lowell High School. So I'm just going to tell you a little bit about the early college Lowell program. It's a partnership between Middlesex Community College, Lowell Public Schools, and Project Learn. It was launched in 2019. So prior to that, we had a robust dual enrollment program, but in 2019, we got early college designation. And the purpose of early college is to improve success college, success outcomes for students who are typically underrepresented in higher education by breaking down barriers and increasing access to college for these students. It provides Lowell High School students with the opportunity to enroll in college-level courses. Everything is free and they are transferable. So they are partnered with MCC, they get the credit through Middlesex, but they are transferable credits. In 2019, when we were awarded early college designation, we were one of the first in the Commonwealth, and we have since grown into one of the largest and most comprehensive programs in the state. Yay! And we did get the chance to go to the State House for Early College Advocacy Day in March, where we had the opportunity to sit with Dominic Lay, who then invited us here and met with our students, and we appreciate you having us, so thank you. The program model, our students have options. They, a lot of them take their classes at Lowell High School with Lowell High School teachers during the day, and those teachers have been vetted and approved through Middlesex, so they are able to earn credit through that. This year, we have a brand-new program called Early College Independence, where students come to Lowell High School for the first four periods of the day, and then they get on campus at Middlesex Community College with college professors. I think this is important exposure to the college environment, and Jaska will talk a little bit about that. We also have multiple pathways and supports for these students. They can take courses in education, business, life science, STEM, humanities, criminal justice. This year alone, we offered 15 different courses and ran over 140 different sections. They also have a access to supports, including tutoring and coaching at Lowell High School, but also all of the supports, the tutoring center, the writing lab, the library over at Middlesex. I want to just highlight how our program has grown over the years. In 2019 and 2020 school year, we had 239 students enrolled in early college classes, and last school year, we had 421. So that is a 76% increase in students. In terms of credits earned, in the 2019-2020 school year, students earned a total of 2,054 credits, and last year, they earned over 3,100 credits for a 51% increase. So this is an impactful program. As of fall 2022, so this data is a little bit old, older, we had over 4,000 students take early college classes, over 5,000 courses taken, over 9,800 credits earned, and almost $2.5 million saved by our families. And that has only grown because that was as of fall 2022. Early college students in Lowell boast a 96% pass rate, so they are successful because of the supports that they have in place. The class of 2025 that Jaska is a part of, they're graduating with 3,560 credits, which is a savings of $914,000. At the state level, early college programming doubles the odds that low-income students will enroll in college and persist to the second year. And that just speaks to the value of this program. So now I'm going to pass it off to Jaska, and she's going to tell you just a little bit about her experience.
Hi, everyone. Excuse the mess I look like right now, I just got out of practice, but my name is Jaska Rae, and I am a senior in the independence program and also the senior class president. Since the beginning of my junior year, I was able to take early college courses at the high school and receive credits that I'd be able to transfer once I was in college. When I was introduced to the independence program, which would take place at Middlesex, I thought it was a pretty exciting thing. This program was able to show me and a lot of other students how college really was. Being able to go to the MCC campus on her own, the excessive workload, class deadlines, really strict deadlines at that, and class cancellations, which is a pretty cool thing for high school students. I feel like it made us mature and feel the college experience before we actually went to college. Now, I'm able to walk into college with 30 credits, nearly being a sophomore in college already. I'm really grateful for the, I'm really grateful for the early college classes and the independence program. As you may know, a three-credit class costs about more than $100, so it saved me a lot of money in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jaska will be attending UMass Lowell next year and majoring in nursing, so congratulations. And lastly, I wanted to invite another president up here, Phil Sisson from Middlesex Community College. Thank you very much for being our partner.
Yeah, absolutely. Just want to say Heather and Jaska have done such a beautiful job. This is a program you should all be incredibly proud of. We are. Millions of dollars saved. These students are not recruited to go to Middlesex. Those credits are transferable, and students go everywhere. Private institutions, public institutions across the country, UMass Lowell, you've heard. We also would love to invite you to the first dual enrollment, concurrent enrollment, early college graduation ceremony that we're going to have as a recognition ceremony. It'll be at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium. You have an invitation on your table. We hope you can join us, and all of us are happy to answer any questions that we may you may have.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much. 3.2, spotlight excellence, the Butler Middle Schools participation. Yes?
Can I speak?
Sure. Raise your hand next time.
Thank you. I just want to say that great job, Middlesex. I want to thank Middlesex for, and President Sisson for open up a lot of opportunities, opportunities for Lowell students, Lowell High students. And I just want to say we are grateful to have you as a partner. And, you know, normally, we would recognize individuals or a person who achieved something great, but tonight, we do something different. We want to honor the program. And I thought that early program is a gem everybody should take advantage of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to congratulate you too with this partnership. I've had the distinct pleasure to work with Middlesex Community College most of my life when I was at the high school, and we had an incredible relationship. Back then, it was Dr. Molly Sheehy and Dr. Jay Lanahan and Maria Cunyan. We worked well, and it looks like the, it has continued, which I think is extremely important. And what's really important is, if you take a look at the price of college today, it's astronomical, and especially in the private schools. This is a great opportunity for a lot of kids that would never have a chance to go to college, and they are now. So again, I congratulate you on this program, and I certainly hope it continues for a long time. Thank you for being a great partner.
Ms. Doherty?
I certainly want to echo the congratulations. I think it's wonderful that the program, I remember when it was just a dual enrollment, few students here and there, but we were really looking to get more students involved. So this is wonderful. Couple of quick questions. So I'm so proud to hear that we were one of the first that the state, and that now we're the largest. So is it true, then, that the state is funding the whole program? It's not coming out of our local budget at all?
The request from the 15 community college presidents this year is for $31 million. 13 million of that is for overall concurrent and dual enrollment. That means students that may come to the college and take courses in to defray their costs. The other 14 million, with an additional four to help create a broader program in early college, is just for early college students alone. And so the state has been incredible about founding this effort. This is, you'd be surprised how many high schools and vocational schools have applied for that designation. It's harder than an accreditation to complete the work that we did with Lowell High School when we started this program, but it was great that we were able to do it very early on in the process, along with Neshoba Valley Tech, and we've had great success. We have about six other applications in the pipeline, but none of them have been as successful as the work that we're doing with Lowell. So significant contribution by the state to be able to continue this work.
Well, that's fantastic, and I think not only is it impacting those students who are going to enter college with a year under their belt or multiple, multiple credits under their belt, but I think it has a ripple effect with other students, seeing that college is a possibility. Maybe I hadn't thought about it. Maybe no one in my family before me has been able to go to college. So I think there's a huge benefit for the community. And then my last question, because the statistics are awesome in terms of the percentage of students who are passing these classes, and I know at some point, we had a one-credit seminar for freshmen. When you talk about the number of students involved and passing, are you including that freshman seminar in that? No, so that's separate. But we are still doing that one-credit.
Absolutely. The model is unique in the sense that there are one-credit classes, so that every student at Lowell High School gets adjusted to the idea of going to college and get acclimated. Then, as they continue, they and their families make a decision to be early college or to be engaged in some other program. And so I think that we will see growth from there, but yeah, every single student at Lowell High School has this opportunity and begins right from the very beginning of their experience.
But it's not reflected in the statistics you gave us today?
Not reflected in the data, correct.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great job.
Three and four-credit classes.
Right. Well, that's even more impressive, right? It's incredible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you. Thank you. 3.2, spotlight on excellence, the Butler Middle School participation in a Celtics Playbook Initiative. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, school committee members. You know, I'm sure, that the Butler Middle School has a community schools program. It is one of our most innovative and enterprising programs, offering a variety of services and supports to our students and to their families. And I'd like to commend them on one of their more recent initiatives, and it involves what we call the Celtics Playbook. I'll have the community schools manager from the Butler School, Nader Fernandez, come and explain it to you.
Good evening, school committee members. I'm Nader Fernandez, the community school manager at the Butler Middle School, and I'm excited to announce our participation as the only school in greater Lowell to be a part of the Celtics Playbook Initiative. Organizing collaboration with Project 351, the Celtic Shamrock, the Celtic Shamrock Foundation and the New Balance Foundation, this initiative is endorsed by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. It offers an exceptional opportunity for student leadership development, empowering young leaders through community engagement and personal growth. Our students engage in enriching activities and workshops led by playbook alumni, including Butler graduate Adario Miranda. These experiences focus on teamwork, collaboration, and service-based leadership, highlighting the power of partnerships and shaping the next generation. At the Butler Middle School, we embrace the community school model, creating a hub of well-rounded development. As the only public middle school in the district with an active National Junior Honor Society chapter and one of six United Nations Global Schools in New England, we prioritize academic excellence and global citizenship in everything we do. This model positions us as an incubator for resilient 21st century leaders, equipping our students to contribute meaningfully to both local and global communities. Together, we foster a supportive environment that empowers our youth to thrive. Today, I'm proud to introduce four exceptional students, Aubriella Green, Benjamin Sun, and Jay Saposki. They are eager to share how this initiative has impacted our school community and their professional development.
Hi, my name is Aubriella Green. As a student athlete who values teamwork, I believe the Playbook Initiative was a fantastic platform for us to work together. Collaborating with peers from different backgrounds and schools allowed us to share ideas and learn from one another. This effort is not just about completing tasks, it's about building relationships to help our community.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Sun. When Mr. Fernandez asked me to join Playbook, I was very excited about the opportunity to meet students from other schools. Engaging with students from another school helped me expand my perspective and understand their viewpoints. It was a chance to create connections that extend beyond our local community.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jay Saposki, and the service project aspect of the Playbook Initiative is something I feel deeply passionate about. Our goal was to improve our school community, building on the great work that has already been done. I believe that when we come together to serve, we not only make our surroundings better, but also inspire others to join. People who visit the Butler talk about our school pride, and this initiative allows us to showcase that pride through meaningful action.
Participating in the Playbook Initiative was also a significant step in developing our leadership skills. In high school, we are eager to take on roles that will help us guide our peers and inspire them to contribute to our community. This initiative empowered us to be proactive leaders, showing us that we can make a difference together. Together, we believe that participating in the Playbook Initiative aligns perfectly with our school's mission to create compassionate leaders.
I just want to highlight Principal Moody for her commitment to the community school model, and this would have been impossible without former Butler alumni, Adario Miranda, coming to us. So it's kind of showing full circle that even though we weren't a community school model at the time, the work that the Butler is doing is being seen in the community, and people that came to the Butler, people that see the Butler, are really believing in the model, and they're seeing it as a way to use partnerships, collaborations with public entities, private institutions, to really focus on the benefits for our students and our students' well-being. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say congratulations to the Butler School. Good job, Nader, and the student speakers, and of course, again, don't get upset, Ms. Moody, for doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Moving on, 3.3, public hearing, enter district school choice program. Start off with all those in favor, in favor, in favor. The portion meeting is closed. All those in opposition, 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 that portion of the meeting is closed. We'll take a vote later on down the agenda. Moving on, 3.4, budget, public hearing notice. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is simply a notice for public purposes of the budget hearings we're going to have. It includes in there tonight's meeting, when we'll introduce the budget. It includes next Wednesday, when we'll have a meeting dedicated to open budget forum, and then the meeting on the 21st of May, when we hope to close out the budget cycle.
Thank you. Moving on, section four minutes, motion to approve the special regularly scheduled Lowell School Committee Meeting minutes of April 16, 2025, interposed on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Doherty, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.2, the approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled Lowell School Committee Meeting on April 16, 2025. Those two, right? Two seconds. Yeah. Motion by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Bahu, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Five, permission to enter. 5.1, May 7, 2025, in motion to approve permission by Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Del Rossi. Any questions or comments? Ms. Doherty?
Yes, I, and I, I'm sorry, I thought I marked it, but I didn't. My question relates to charges for the National Opinion Research Center and the Playful Learning Grant. So first, we see we have the Playful Learning Grant, I thought it was for $80,000. It's under Neighborhood Villages Action Fund? So I'm just trying to understand, we're spending money on this playful learning grant, and then we're doing, we're spending $25,000 to see if it's been effective? Someone explain what those two charges relate to. Thank you.
Superintendent?
I'm not sure we have an answer. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, when you receive a grant, there are conditions attached, and one of the conditions that grant oftentimes is that you evaluate the effectiveness of it. I'm not saying that with great certainty, but it seems that that makes sense. It's been the case in the past. We can, if you wish to withhold that item, we will seek clarity before.
I don't need to withhold it, but I'm wondering if we could just get an explanation at the next meeting? Because it looks like we're going to be spending, and I, you know, it's a grant, so I don't know what the requirements are of it, but $80,000 of the grant is going to be for professional development, technical assistance for these playful learning strategies with leaders, teachers, and powers at the Lincoln and the Cardinal. And then we're, the grant is $25,000 to evaluate the effectiveness. I'm just, just, you can just give me an explanation at the next meeting. I don't want to hold it up.
Thank you.
I would move to accept unless there's other questions.
We'll call Ron Corpius.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Lay.
Yes.
Ms. Martin. Seven yeses.
Section six, motion 6.1 by Mr. Del Rossi, request the superintendent establish a mental health-focused youth advisory council, so that the students in our community can have their voices heard and considered when decision-makers make decisions for members of our community. Seconded by Ms. Doherty, Mr. Del Rossi.
Thank you. I had some very brave, young students from the Daly Elementary, Daly Middle School reach out to me about creating this youth advisory group, which I'm very proud of the fact that they are here and are ready to speak on it. Because mental health is something that nobody wants to talk about, but everybody is definitely experiences impacts in some ways. So I think this would be good for everyone to have their voice, voice heard and have student participation involved and have our leaders hear what students are looking for. Thank you.
Anna Silva?
Hello, my name is Anna Silva, and I am an eighth grader from the James S. Daly Middle School. First, I would like to thank Ms. Del Rossi and Mr. Conway for answering our class when we were emailing and calling our school committee members, and Ms. Del Rossi for filing this motion. The creation of a joint middle school and high school-based youth advisory council will help mend the communication gaps, gaps between students and the decision-makers in our school district. We know the decision-makers have our best interests in mind, but communication can be streamlined if we can all collaborate together. Based on a brief survey we conducted amongst the middle schools, some schools have mandatory SEL classes, some glanced over the topic in a health class, and others did not mention anything regarding SEL classes at their school. The objective of an SEL-based youth advisory council is simple, which is to streamline the communication between students and the decision-makers in Lowell Public Schools, so that every LPS middle school and Lowell High can have an instance of concurrent SEL instruction in every building. Before funds are allocated towards various programs, even programs regarding SEL, why not have student voice in the decision-making process? A youth advisory council could tell the decision-makers what works for us and what doesn't work for us, and what we need. All in an effort to efficiently and effectively allocate funding towards SEL-based initiatives that can improve the social, emotional well-being of the student population in Lowell Public Schools. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Rory Lucy, Lucia?
Hello, my name is Rory Lucia, and I'm an eighth grader from the James S. Daly Middle School. A youth advisory council would benefit students because it would allow them to provide their own input on matters that influence or relate to them. A youth advisory council would not only allow students to voice their opinions, but to also help strive for solutions on issues such as mental health. The youth advisory council would not only benefit students, but benefit the decision-makers of Lowell Public Schools via providing effective, direct feedback. For example, an important issue we'd like to work on is getting social, emotional classes for all students. Through a survey, we found out that some schools lack a dedicated, a class dedicated solely to SEL. In an SEL class, students should be taught on topics like mental health and how to cope healthily with it, and other lessons that are key to a student's understanding how and why they feel certain things to process their emotions. Another thing we'd like to address is social, emotional learning professional development for staff. Teachers already do so much, but having them participate in an SEL-aligned professional development could help them approach students in crisis better, and then evaluate whether to connect them to other services within the school more efficiently. This would help the students feel more understood and comfortable, and the teachers would be able to feel confident in understanding their students in an effort to increase a nurturing classroom environment across the district. Other ideas include more student leadership opportunities within the schools, the establishment of a what I need block, and more. The possibilities all start with the youth advisory council, led by student leaders across the middle schools and at the high schools here in Lowell. Thank you for listening and for your time and consideration.
Thank you both very much. Mr. Del Rossi?
So I just wanted to say I love your, both of you, how you were able to put that together, and so are you? together, and so are you guys saying to maybe have a win block for social-emotional needs? To talk about that?
Yes, if there was a youth advisory council, we'd also address that as one of the things.
Okay. I think you guys have a lot of great ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Ms. Dougherty, go ahead.
I just want to add, I think this youth advisory council is a great idea. I wouldn't limit it to just mental health. I think it should be part of the whole health curriculum that we've been developing, and I think it's been, we had a pilot, and now we're revamping it, and we've been talking throughout that period of getting student voices involved in that. I think not only do we get benefit from their perspective, but we also get that deepened engagement when they feel like they're part of it and they have some say. So I think that it wouldn't just be mental health, because I think the mental health education would be part of the health curriculum, wouldn't it? There'll be segments on that. So it'd be a nice piece to, you know, have an advisory. I don't know if, Dr., was supposed to say something?
No, the only thing I wanted to say was that, yes, it could absolutely be part of that, and it also aligns with the idea of extended learning opportunities as well. And so we want to try to integrate that work across during, and then also for extended learning opportunities.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 6.2 by Ms. Dougherty, request superintendent provide the committee with a curriculum plan to ensure students receive a comprehensive education on issues related to plant health, sustainability, and climate change through their kindergarten, through senior year experience in the Lowell Public Schools. Seconded by Ms. Lay, Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you. I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself. I just want to make the point that as educators, I think our role, first as being good role models, is important, and I know there are areas we can improve in terms of our own modeling of best practices in terms of sustainability and being environmentally friendly, but especially important to integrate sustainability at all levels of the schools, to build on the learning, so that we know we're educating our students to be prepared and be good stewards of the city and the environment. So that would just be my whole intention with that, is to figure out where are we already doing it, and where are the gaps? Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Section 7 Subcommittee, 7.1, approval of the minutes of the curriculum and instructional subcommittee meeting, April 29th, 2025, Chairwoman, Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee did meet on April 29th. Present were myself, also Mr. Bahu, Ms. Dougherty, and from the administration, we had Dr. Foxroy facilitating the meeting. We did have two topics that we discussed. First was an answer to a motion by Mr. Bahu regarding financial literacy being taught at the high school. We did get an update on where this is being taught as a discrete kind of topic area. In the freshman seminar, there is an introduction to financial literacy that happens in grade nine. In grades 11 and 12, students have the opportunity to take Introduction to Economics and Finance, and also our grade 12 students do have an opportunity to elect to take a financial algebra course. You know, there are obviously other places within the curriculum where financial concepts are being taught, but I think overall, the discussion that we had really was that we want to see an increase in these opportunities for students, both during the school day and after school. We did have a brief discussion on the potential of providing students with an after-school course, and again, it's, this would be very early in the process, but something to kind of propose as an idea moving forward, whether it was a couple days in the afternoon that students would be able to attend and have financial instruction. It could be the kind of thing that could be offered by community partners. Certainly, local agencies, I will say, including my own community teamwork, do offer this programming pretty extensively. There is also a network of local financial institutions, both banks and credit unions, that offer this, that could be a coordinated effort to provide the service. I think one of the things that we discussed was the opportunity to tie this to other kind of positive opportunities for our students. I think the idea of being able to offer this as really almost a certificate-based course, so that it had the appropriate rigor, that as students went through it, they could be, if, you know, passing, you know, the tasks and whatever tests and quizzes were part of it, that they could be awarded a certificate that you would hope would have some real heft, and we could have an opportunity perhaps to tie that into some of our scholarship opportunities, that this could be something that could be one of the criteria for our students when they're going through that scholarship process. That could be an added benefit to them, that could be part of the rubric that's used when these scholarship decisions are being made. So we did kind of have a good time kind of deciding what we thought this might possibly be, leaving it in the hands of the administration to hopefully take it the next step, and that we'll hopefully be able to discuss this more in the future. It did also lead to a conversation around our health education and the work that's being done there, to bring our offerings into alignment with the 2023 physical education frameworks from the state. So looking at renewing the Michigan model, curriculum licenses, looking to target some professional development opportunities, both for middle and high school educators, from Lighthouse Wellness, and looking to, again, looking to appoint some lead teachers and bring in some additional instructional resources, so that we can really promote vertical alignment from that middle school to high school level, to ensure students are getting a comprehensive health education experience. There was a grant, a $50,000 grant, that the district had received from DESI to promote safe and healthy learning environments. It's being used to support this kind of standards-based health education program that supports both the educators and the actual students. I would see if there are any other notes I may have missed, both from my colleagues and also from Dr. Foxroy. If there's anything I've missed that you feel should be mentioned, please, please jump in. Thank you.
I'd just like to make a comment. It's currently in the state legislature, a motion filed to develop financial literacy as a graduation requirement in the state of Massachusetts, which is, you know, something that we all need to look at. We shared that at the subcommittee meeting, and I think that's really important, that we go ahead and start the conversation, start moving forward towards educating our students for financial literacy. 69% of high school students enroll in college, and that's what we're looking to earmark right now with the kids that are trying to get into college, so that we can begin to tie a financial literacy course to their college preparation, whether it's filling out the FAFSA, or it's progressing them towards their college career. The one thing that, so we didn't discuss, that I'm sure we can discuss at a later date, there's still about 30% of our students that don't go to college. So it's important that we go ahead and, you know, prepare them to understand, you know, the costs of running a small business, paying rent, credit cards, car payments, interest rates, and so on and so forth. So that was something that I sort of wanted to touch on, because it's something that's progressing within the state, and it's, at some point, probably going to become a DESI requirement very soon. The second thing I wanted to touch on, that, you know, we didn't touch on in the health meeting, is that we did have someone come here to our school committee meeting a number of months ago. His name was Mr. O'Keefe, and he was from the United States Drug Enforcement Agency, and he wanted to speak to our students, you know, he's from the New England Division, about the dangers of drugs, and, you know, how we can go ahead and implement that into our curriculum, into our health curriculum, so students can help make better decisions. So, you know, if Ms. Foxroy or Dr. Foxroy, you could maybe go ahead and reach out to Mr. O'Keefe and see if he would be available to be a part of that health curriculum. I'm sure it could be beneficial to all of our students, just because it's something that is unfortunately a part of the landscape of America right now. So just wanted to add my two cents on that. Thank you, Ms. Martin. It was a great report.
Motion to accept the report, report of progress by Ms. Martin. Seconded by, oh, correct, I apologize.
I have a question, and I don't know how plausible this is, but during MCAS at Lowell High School, students who aren't taking the MCAS, the school basically shuts down, and we all sit in advisory, and I'm kind of wondering if we can use that time to have, like, guest speakers like Mr. O'Keef come and give, like, a presentation to students during this time, where we're just, like, kind of doing nothing? Or if we had guest speakers about financial literacy? I'm just wondering if that would be possible, since we're doing nothing?
No idea. Excellent. Superintendent, you got that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Rika.
Motion to accept the report, report of progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Bahu, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 7.2, approval of the minutes of the Special Education Subcommittee Meeting on April 29th, 2025, Chairwoman, Ms. Del Rossi.
Thank you. The Special Education Subcommittee met on Tuesday, April 29th, at 7:00 PM. Present were myself, Ms. Dougherty, and Mrs. Martin, as well as Ms. Brown Legrand and Ms. Busias, Special Ed Director. We wanted to really go over some Special Education Department updates, as well as some programming updates. We were informed that there's been some significant progress that's been made in the second half of the school year, with lots of site visits and programs, teams to really assess available states and resources across the buildings, to assure everybody has what they really need in their buildings. We also, we talked about when there would be a timeline to kind of know, like, if there are going to be any changes, because Special Ed has been walking through buildings, doing lots of site visits. So Ms. Busio said that we should have a timeline presented in around June that will outline the next key steps and goals for the upcoming year, if any changes need to be made. We also discussed some longer-term strategies. We talked about, Ms. Busio has shared that she met with professors from UMass Lowell to discuss expanding internship for those students there to come and work with Lowell Public Schools, which is great, and work with administrators in the district's tutoring center. Ms. Legrand let us know that, an update on the Jendark School stating that it's intended to eventually become a permanent campus for the entire Dr. GNSAD program, which will be all a CSA program. There's, I was definitely curious about that, because we heard that it was going to be used for an all-Special Ed housing, and just to know that it was going to be all CSA was reassuring. And if we can continue to kind of do more of those little school programs for all our populations, would be even better eventually. I know you guys are working hard on that. So we're currently housing 24 to 26 students at the high school level across four classrooms right now at the current Jendark School that's open. The ranges are eighth grade through 22. The buildings still, the Jendark Building's obviously still undergoing renovations, and they'll essentially integrate the rest of the students in there. They're working on parking. Parking is also maybe a challenge there. Ms. Dougherty raised concerns about caseloads, especially the speech and language caseloads and OT caseloads, which have been an ongoing concern. Ms. Busio and Ms. Legrand acknowledged the caseloads remain high across all the special education teams, reporting that speech and language was added to the budget last year, but it hasn't been filled still. So we talked about more collaboration with Mass General and so forth, to kind of alleviate that caseload. And I think I got everything, but if I forgot anything, if anybody needs to add anything?
Thank you, Ms. Del Rossi. Motion to accept the report, report of progress by Ms. Lay, seconded by Mr. Conway, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Section 8, reports to the superintendent. 8.1, proposed budget FY '26. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. School committee members have a draft or proposed budget in your packet. I'd like to give a little bit of context on that. There's a lot I could say. I'll try to keep my remarks concise, and then take questions. I'd also like to offer a few minutes for our Assistant Superintendent for Finance, Dr. Pinto, to give some context as well. For the coming school year, for the coming fiscal year, fiscal '26, the state has increased its funding to the school department by about 7.5%. That includes what we call Chapter 70, and it includes an increment in Student Opportunity Act funding. We've been working for quite some time on the budget. We've got a lot of input from the community, from schools, and the uptick in state funding to schools, we found was sufficient to what we call "level service to schools." It was not quite enough to meet all of our needs, with increased health, increased transportation costs, contractual raises, et cetera. We were making our budget work with level service to schools and modest cuts at central office. However, last week, we learned that while we budgeted, draft budget, with a conservative figure of $14 million in city cash, we learned last week that the city intends to give us $10 million in city cash, and it's a serious concern. It has caused us, at the last minute, to trim our budget considerably, leading to considerable layoffs, both at central office and in schools. A summary of those impacts is available to the school committee tonight on a sheet that looks like this. We will incorporate it into the budget book that will be part of the public record in time for our hearing next week. I want to say that at any time that you're doing budget work, you're making choices, and when the city decides to reduce its cash contribution to our schools, that is a choice. The funding for our schools also represents the values that we have and the value that we place in our schools. We don't like, people don't like oftentimes to be lectured about research and what we know from cases right across this country, and right across other countries too, about the value of education, not just to individual students, which is what we focus on, but to your property values, to the economic health of our community, to the safety of our community. All of that is tied to the success of our schools. To reduce city cash to our schools would be incredibly short-sighted and detrimental to our work. I am hoping that this committee and members of our community will take this $10 million of city cash to be a beginning number that we will considerably try to raise, to get us to a reasonable amount. And for context on that, the city is obligated to support the schools to the tune of $68 million next year, $68.9 million. The past year was 64.5, or 64.9, excuse me. In recent years, the city has given most of its support, most of those millions of dollars, in what's called "maintenance of effort," plowing the school driveways when there's snow in the winter, fixing the bubblers when the plumbing is malfunctioning in schools, et cetera, et cetera. And they have given us a cash amount of about 22%, so of their net school spending. So net school spending this past year has been $64.9 million. 22% of that is $14 million. We budgeted it based on that, which was conservative. The amount that the city is proposing to give us in cash for the coming year is the lowest proportion on record. We've gone through the records for the last 10 years. I've been contacted by local historians who assure me that it's the lowest in memory on record. It happens that the city has, we believe, about $21 million this year in what's called "free cash." The city also had $15 million in free cash last year. The city has recently been applauded and given headline news for their clever savings and use of savings and their management of accounts to... and use of savings and their management of accounts to have $15 million in interest payments. We don't have in our schools, by the way, we don't have reliable summer school, we don't have reliable after school programs, all of the things that the state funding is meant to support us to do. The state funding being increased by Student Opportunity Act is because they recognize that in cities like Lowell, our students have barriers to an education that is not their, students elsewhere don't have. To take that opportunity and strip it back based on the city needs would be short sighted. I'm encouraging you please to support us in having that be redressed. I'll take any questions. In the meantime, I'd like to have Dr. Pinto have an opportunity to give out some other context.
Thank you. Good evening. Just as per the superintendent, and he's talked to you a little bit about the totals, total aid increase this year over last, and the desire to maintain level services. So this year's budget was developed to maintain level service with an aim to preserve staffing and programming at at least the FY25 level despite growing cost pressures. So at this stage, the budget remains provisional as it awaits state appropriations, further guidance from the school committee and federal and state agencies. Some of the key drivers and trends this year, the FY26 operating budget reflects a 6% year over year increase compared to the FY25 adopted budget. And some of those drivers include increased salaries and wages, largely due to step and longevity adjustments and collective bargaining agreements. It includes an increase to special education tuition, and so that's driven by higher out of district placements and mandated rate hikes. It also includes an increase to transportation costs related to contractual escalators and student need. We've also made strategic investments to support early childhood, multilingual learners, social emotional needs and school safety. Those were strategic investments that we made. The city contribution and fiscal outlook, so you heard about the reduction, the $4 million reduction over what we had anticipated. We anticipated we were going to receive at least the same cash that we got last year. Instead, we received a $4 million cut. Proportionally, we could have expected 4.9 million. Instead, we're getting 10. So this resulted in reductions in personnel, services and program areas. And so this reduced commitment, while they do meet state obligations, poses sustainability concerns as inflation and student needs rise. Some of the challenges and considerations for us, the city has yet to provide a written rationale for the cash reduction. The maintenance of effort increase from the city lacks both clarity and specificity, so they have not shared a written plan with us on how they're going to increase that maintenance of effort. So the district is navigating a flat enrollment with growing student complexity, including higher needs among multilingual and unhoused students. Rising out of district tuition and benefits costs are outpacing our revenue growth. One-time ESER funding sunsets in FY25, and this increases pressure on the general fund. The budget includes comprehensive site based detail to support transparency and school level planning. So in conclusion, the FY26 budget reflects a thoughtful stewardship in a constrained environment, prioritizing student well being with equitable access. It preserves critical services while identifying targeted reductions. Long term sustainability will require continued collaboration with the city and state. And stakeholder from feedback remains welcome as the proposal moves through the final stages and legislative review, and we're going to continue to refine the document going forward. A quick orientation to the budget document that you got in your packet. The introduction section includes a message from the superintendent, my memo, some of the guiding principles on budget development. The financial section, which is the second section, includes revenues, expenses, the compiled budget document along with school site funding and budgets and salaries. And finally, the appendices includes other sources of revenue, charts and tables, including the year over year spend to give you an idea of trends. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I want to start by saying I'm disappointed in these numbers coming out of the city. And I really had seen so much more collaboration in terms of working on our facility needs and just working together better, that I did not expect this. I think it's a double blindside hit too, because not only are they cutting 25% of the cash contribution they made last year from 14 to 10 million, but the state is recommending that they give us 18 million. So they're really, it's almost like 50% less. The state doesn't come up with these numbers randomly. They look at the needs of our community as Superintendent Skinner mentioned. They look at the challenges our students face and they look at our ability to pay. And they say, okay, we're not a rich city, we're not a Weston, we're not a Wellesley, so the state's going to help us more with the education. So they set this bare minimum, and the bare minimum was for the city of Lowell to, what was the total, 68.9 million, which 14 million of that was cash last year. The state's recommending another 4 million. If I get those numbers corrected, I'm just speaking in simple round number terms. So for the city to come forward here at the 11th hour and tell us, we're not giving you the total amount that the state's recommended because your costs have gone up, which is that 7.5% increase that the Student Opportunity Act covers, we're going to give you even 25% less than we gave you last year. So I would ask, in the way of a formal motion, I would ask my colleagues to support me in asking the city to provide in writing their reasoning for this reduction in contribution to the schools and how they plan on increasing their maintenance of effort by what literally comes out to be another $8 million. The 4 million in cash they gave us last year, they're not giving us. And the 4 million, are my numbers incorrect here? Because we're looking at a maintenance of effort that's now going to be what, 68.9 million?
The total commitment would be 68.9 million. That includes the cash and the maintenance of effort.
So that's both. So you subtract the 10 million they're offering, and please justify, how are you going to spend $58 million on maintenance of effort? Where is that coming from? What are those numbers coming from? And I don't understand the justification for saying the state recognizes we have this need, they're contributing, they're ponying up a good percentage of the money. And even if the city said, okay, we can't go the full 18 million in cash, but to cut us to 10 million? It's outrageous. And we're looking at, I didn't count the list, but are we looking at 70 positions? How many positions does this list recommend equal to?
I beg your pardon, Ms.?
How many positions are we looking to reduce?
This in front of you represents 53 positions.
53, okay. So I had done my rough math, was we were looking at in the 60s. So depending on, you're taking a lot of administrative positions out, so that's going to be less positions because they're higher paid. And I just want to end with this last final thing. I do not think we as a committee should just sit back and accept this number. We have worked very hard to put positions in like social workers, like tutors, like Paris, because we recognize that all the education districts across the country had severe setbacks during the pandemic. And later in the meeting, we're going to look at our graduation rates and we'll see that we're, in the dropout rates, we're starting to get back to pre pandemic numbers. Like people are anxious, students are anxious. We need the support. And we're not talking about, this is a minor thing. This is the future of our city. And I just think we need some explanation from the city of how they came up with these cuts to even, we're just trying to provide level services so we can continue to make progress. And that was my motion to get a report from the city with a letter of explanation and how they're going to come up with 58.9 million in maintenance of effort.
I'll second that motion. Ms. Spiket?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the members of the school committee working to address this matter, and I encourage you to continue to advocate, including with city councilors. There's a great fallacy in our community at the moment that after ESER, we're in really good shape. And with Student Opportunity Act money increasing year on year, we're in good shape. If you heard what I said earlier, the increases that we received, if the city cash remained at 14 million, which is a very, very low threshold, but if it had remained at that amount, the increases from the state would have allowed us to level service to schools with some cutbacks from central office. In other words, it's not quite keeping us level, but it's a big help. The Student Opportunity Act, and the state is trying to increase funding to schools like schools in Lowell, because they know about the barriers. We have more homeless students, a higher proportion of students with EL, English Language Learners, and generally a higher proportion of special education students. And already, I would argue, the city is not supporting the schools the way they should. We pay the rent at central office. We pay the rent for a school building in Chelmsford. We need additional school space in Lowell. We don't have enough money for these kinds of things, and we don't have sufficient funds and support from the city to do these things. Our students boil in classrooms and the weather gets hot. We don't have air conditioning. We're not able to run adequate summer school programs and after school programs. On this sheet, you have one of the greatest supports to students after the pandemic, high dosage tutoring. Recognize, we have 13 tutors being cut here. We're not keeping up, let alone making progress, if we do this kind of thing. It is very short sighted. It doesn't behoove the city council. It doesn't behoove the city, whether you're a school person or not. For the benefit of the city in general, we need to adequately fund the schools.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I would certainly support Ms. Doherty's motion to request this information and get a handle on exactly what the, you know, the city's intentions are and the background on this choice. I do think that there are things we need to do on our side as well. I think one key fact that we should be able to share back to the city is, you know, during ESER, as you referenced, we made some different spending choices because we could. I mean, it was an opportunity that I don't think any one of us had ever lived through before. There were some significant investments that we made in our infrastructure at specific school sites that we took from ESER funds, much to Mr. Conway's consternation as we went through this process. But that is a very large number of, when we had the money, we spent it. And we spent it on things that, you know, questionably could have been seen as a city expense. But we took it on and we paid it from ESER funds because we had it. We saw the, you know, we saw the value in these investments. You know, I for one, as we went through this process, really felt that when we were in a position to pay for these things and the city wasn't, the onus was on us to pay them because it was better for students and it was better long term for the district. But I do think that that's a real number we need to share back with the city of what our specifically education based funds were spent on in terms of infrastructure and whatnot that is generally, that is, not generally, but is legally considered to be a city responsibility. So I do think that we should do the math on that and find out exactly what that number is. I also think from our perspective, what would be particularly helpful, I appreciate this list, I appreciate getting it tonight, but I do think we need to be looking at kind of a tiered approach in this. There are certainly cuts on this list that are, let's say, more catastrophic than others. I think generally we have been most successful when we have been able to present, you know, first tier, second tier, third tier options that tie to a dollar amount that we could be very specific about. If we could get this to, if we could, of this $4 million cut, if we could avoid 2 million of it, we'd be able to save 25 tutors, and here's the impact. So I think I would defer to the administration to work, bring together all the expertise to determine, you know, what is, what does it look like if it's only a $3 million cut, a $2 million cut, a $1 million cut? Being optimistic.
We can do that.
But trying to find a middle ground. I mean, I think we can all recognize the city's in a difficult space, in a difficult space too. You know, we've all, I think all of us for the most part have been through really difficult budget times. We know what that's like. So, I mean, you know, we'll always stop short of pitting us against each other. We are all in this together. But I think that we can help make it easier and be able to work with the city to provide them with the kind of information that will help, you know, help make better choices on both sides of this, of this argument. And I realize that that is the biggest thing we're dealing with tonight, so I'm going to say that. We're not going to be doing line by line tonight. I know we'll be doing that during the thing. I did have one question on the budget book itself, and it's really in two parts. First is the salaries that are listed in the main document for the school committee that show a three and a half percent raise. And unless the mayor knows something, I don't know, we haven't gotten a raise. So that should, that should be pulled down to the 12,000. We don't get raises until the city council gives them to us. And I don't think this is the year to ask. Just going to say that. Yeah, we're not looking for raises. What I'm more concerned about is that the number in the front part of the book with the 72,000 represents a $12,000 payment, but the, I'm sorry, I'm reversing that. At the, in the first part of the book, it shows the three and a half percent raise, but that's not reflected in the salary section behind it. So that's showing a $12,000 payment per individual. My concern in that is that these two documents are not talking to each other, that generally in the past, you're pulling all that information from that main spreadsheet to populate your salary spreadsheet. If those aren't connected, if we're getting this information from two different places, I have, I have very real concerns about that.
Understood.
Okay, so that, I just wanted to put that forward.
Ms. Martin, I believe there's a rational explanation for that. Dr. Pinto, do you care to comment?
Thanks for the question. So the salary listing at the back is just a snapshot, a current snapshot in time of the FY25 personnel. We aren't sure, because there's so much movement amongst personnel, we weren't sure who would be carrying forward into FY26. This is also prior to the cuts.
So this is just a?
A snapshot in time.
FY25 salaries. Doesn't represent FY26 salaries?
It does not. So what we'll do is we will include a little note indicating that so that people can make the connection, so it was a student to catch.
But the main document is showing the three and a half percent raise across the board. I mean, ours is irrespective, but for every other, so the salaries are accurate in the first part of the book and not in the second part?
That's correct. The salaries are what we're anticipating for FY26, given the contractual agreements have been settled, et cetera. The back of the book is current, reflects current state.
So both are accurate.
Both are accurate.
One is accurate for next school year when the raises are added. Which is what we're looking at?
Yeah.
And who cares about last year, to be honest?
It's traditional that that's included, that the current status is included, and so it was put in the book as well, meaning that today's salaries are also in there. They're not meant to be the same as next year. Next year includes the raises. But both are in that book and both are accurate.
I'm going to look at that. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Threw you to the superintendent. I mean, this is devastating information that we're getting. And again, it's kind of like the last hour. When did we, when did you know that there was going to be ex monadolas not coming back to the schools?
On Monday evening, a week ago, not this week.
A week ago?
Right. So the city manager had entertained conversations with us about different possibilities. The confirmation we got, we of course told him that we recommended that we be funded to an adequate amount. In our minds, that was 14.9 at minimum, because that would be 22% as it was the previous year. We got confirmation to answer your question on Monday evening, not this Monday, but the one before.
I think it would have been good if you let us know when you got that information too, because I'm hearing it all over. I'm getting telephone calls and I'm saying, I didn't hear anything from the superintendent. I had no, I'm just saying going forward, I think this is, we have to, we have to know, you know, we have to know what's going on. Now, in regards to this here, the last speakers did an absolutely excellent job and they've hit great points, needless to say. And it's almost like the city has a shot memory here, because I think that we have certainly been a very good partner. And I've often said, it's not the city side, it's not the school side, it's one side. It's as simple as that and we have to be working. And needless to say, you know, the students that we have, which was pointed out here by my colleagues, this is not an elite system with plenty of money to do whatever we want to do. Everything has to be, you know, measured out, needless to say. And I think going forward, I think what's important that we keep in mind, and I know I know it can be difficult, because, you know, everyone has certain types of jobs that, or programs that they think is mandatory, and they should have it, and so forth. We all have that. I understand that. But I think that whether it's you, Mr. Superintendent, the school committee, or the custodian, or the cafeteria workers, we're all in this to do one thing, and that is to preserve the integrity of the classroom. And you know that, as educators, what takes place in the classroom, learning, you need the teacher there. It's as simple as that. So, which I've often said, and the last place that we need to cut should be, should be the classroom. That's the last place, not the first place. So I hope that going forward in this budget, that we're cognizant of that, and, you know, when we take a look at the administrative jobs, you know, many people have said that we're top-heavy. Now, we're probably not the only school system that might be in that category. It's nationwide. I get it. If you take a look at the graphs, I don't want to bore you by showing the graphs. It's very evident. So I think that we have to be very careful when we go over this budget to make sure that we're preserving that integrity of the, of the classroom. And just, just to point out a couple things, the modular classrooms that we paid for, and I know that it's been brought up a number of times and so forth, and the monies were available at the time, and, you know, it was probably a pretty good idea. However, this is where the city side should be saying, hey, I remember, you know, they stepped up to the plate, and they put $5.4 million on the table. That's a hell of a lot of money, and we paid for that, all right? And we could have dug our feet in and say, no, we're not going to do that. That's the city's responsibility. We also have the Jean-Doc School. That's, I believe, is at $2.4 million?
Correct.
Once again, we need room for our kids. It's obvious. And yet, here we are, $2.4 million, all right? And then, if I recall, in the last subcommittee in business, didn't we, didn't we send back $1.4 million back to the city? Is that correct?
We had...
Or was it 1.2 or 1.4?
1.1 in free cash.
I'm sorry?
We had 1.1 in free cash.
1.1. It'd be nice if we had that, huh?
So, yeah, it would be.
Right. Well, I'm just saying, I think, taking a look at all this, they have to sit down and say to themselves, wait a minute, let's take a look at the list here of monies. We certainly have been a good partners. Now, this is the time. A partner, it's both ways. And this is the time that our kids need the resources and the supplies and the manpower to get the job done for the classroom.
Thank you.
To Mr. Conway's point, he spoke of Williams, superintendent, and I know, boy, you've been here for a year and a half, but would it be possible to get a list and the salaries of all the new positions in the past five years that have come on board for Lowell Public Schools?
It would be, Mr. Mayor. I don't have enough information to suggest when we could do that for you, but we certainly could endeavor to get it while we're working on the budget. There are several, there are several concerns that I have, and potential fallacies that we, that were top-heavy. That is not the case by any objective standards. Not the superintendent telling you so. It is the superintendent telling you so. But I'm telling you, based on objective, we can pull what makes for a good school system. What's adequate staffing for a school? What's adequate staffing for a classroom? How large should a central office be? We can answer those questions, I could answer those questions and add a lot more. But there can be, there's research on these things. We had last spring, about this time, we had a report from a nationally renowned company called Public Works on what these things should look like. I don't want to base it on our opinions. We should, as Mr. Conway says, the classroom is sacred. That's the number one, when we should preserve that. We also want the buses to run on time. We also want people to be paid efficiently. We want to run professional development for our staff, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If we, if we look at these costs of administration, I suggest that you hold me accountable to give you explanations, as well as adequate details around what is generally recommended and not just by the superintendent.
And then one more caveat to that. How much of those positions were paid for by Esser monies, please?
Understood. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Bahu?
Thank you. I think the first thing I'd like to discuss is, I'm thankful I am to be honest, a number of years ago, I chose to run for this city, because I know schools are the most important thing, that drive a city's real estate, that drives a city's image, that drives, drives any city. So I said, I really want to be on the Lowell School Committee, because I'd love to implement vocational programming. And I'd love to go ahead, and that is something that the superintendent and his staff, I'd love to be able to pick a superintendent and a team that will go ahead and move the school system forward. I've done, things are moving progressively forward. I'd love to be part of that Lowell High School Building Project. I am a city school committee member that's part of that Lowell High School Building Project. We have a terrific relationship with the city council and the city manager and the superintendent. And we are moving in a way that I don't think that I could imagine in going any better direction. Our graduation rates are up, our attendance rates are up, our, our facilities are being worked on. We need to give the city an awful lot of credit. We're getting the roofs, we're getting the windows, we're getting the heating systems. We have a great relationship with the city manager, the city council, as well as this school committee moving the school forward. I understand that the city's spending tens of millions of dollars, and I understand that they could go ahead and make an argument about all of the maintenance of effort, and that would be a part of it, windows and heating systems and roofs. And the Lowell High School Building Project is running over project, and yes, they are investing ten to twelve dollars, and they're investing in top of the whole, the whole situation. They're working, and I must be the city in part of a lot of it. The thing is, is that we need to go ahead and educate children, because ultimately, this is why I came here. My goal is to educate children. How do I educate children? But through the classroom. When we look at considering cutting our staff that's in the classroom, that our student support services, then ultimately, we're going backwards in our education, and it's actually making our city, not my school, it's actually making our image fall off suddenly, sort of scat from the back. We have, the city is giving us, has given us over the past four years, 22% of what our debt schools spending required of us. In 2023, we saw 2.7 billion. In 24, it was 13.2 million. In '25, it was 14 million. This year, this year...
Here, they're offering 14 million. I'm sorry, they're offering 10 million. Only 14%. Basically, with what the state is saying, the $69 million that this budget is to, you know, be considered, they should be giving us 22% of that, which really equates to $15.1 million. Now, we need to, we just went ahead and offered raises to our, to our staff, and we want to go ahead and say, we appreciate every single one of you. We, so to be level-funded is not something that is, something that's going to progress this school system. It's actually going to move us backwards. What the city is doing is they're proposing a over 30% reduction in what the free cash offer is, to go ahead and benefit their schools and their school district. This is something that we need to consider. We need to consider transportation costs. I think, you know, you know, I'm moving a little bit, but I need to ask you, Mr. Skinner, how many students did we have in our school system two years ago, last year, and this upcoming year, based on the October 1 numbers?
So off the top of my head, I believe that two years ago, we were just below 14,000 students, so 13,900. A year ago, we had moved up into the mid-14,000s, and right now, we're at over 15,000 students.
So we're over 15,000 students. We're up at least 1,200, if not more, 13,9 to 15,1, at least 1,200 students. But the city is saying, we need to go ahead and cut the free cash that we're offering you, and you need to consider cutting positions. That is pretty alarming. That is pretty upsetting. To me, as a school committee member who has high lofty goals for this school district, and I understand the facilities that the school, the city is working on, right, the windows and the roofs that I mentioned, and the building, you know, the Lowell High School building. But was that some stuff that needed to be used, that needed to be taken care of three administrations ago, four administrations ago? Has these, have these projects begun to mount because our buildings were not in proper order, and they're finally giving us that, moving us in that direction, which makes us move in the right direction, makes our facilities look better, makes our school look better, and makes the overall school system look better? Ultimately, what's most important is that we educate students. And with the school, say, I'm sorry, with the city offering $10 million on what should be 21, I'm sorry, $15.1 million is grossly, grossly, and under, sort of a slap in our face. I was told, I was told by a number of city councilors that they did not know anything about this until Friday. So you were informed about this in the 11th hour on Monday. The city council didn't know anything about it on Friday. The city manager, you know, last night, expressed that he'd like to go ahead and increase the levy taxes in the city of Lowell by 2.5%. Well, would you consider, you know, increasing the funding that you give to the Lowell Public Schools by 2.5%? Because you're asking the city residents to pay 2.5% more in real estate taxes. So this is, this is something that is not sitting well with me, or I can tell this whole school committee. And Ms. Doherty, I 100% back your motion, and I would love to see the city move away from this, digging their heels in the ground and saying, this is all we have for you, when ultimately, we have been good stewards. Good stewards in the sense of purchasing the St. Jean-Doc School. And realistically, it's not even open right now. So we have this money that we've invested, and we can't even go ahead and, and, and teach students. And we were told that we would be there for you, and ultimately, it's taken one year to even put in a, a request for proposal to go ahead and put an elevator in, and to go ahead and get that school ready for us. We paid for those modular classrooms out of our Esser money. We invested. We are being good stewards. We are, we are moving this city forward, and we're all doing it with pride, and we're all doing it with heart. So I can only plead to the city and the city manager to go ahead and give us what is rightfully ours, so that we can begin to keep moving this school system and this city forward.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think all of my colleague has been spoken eloquently, and I don't think I can make much more than it is, but I do want to say a few more things that, that I'm also disappointed that we do not. The thing is, with the inflation and everything, level funding is already a cut. It's considered as a cut already. And the trend in the past is that I've seen that the city has never given us, given the school department what the state has recommended. It's always has been less. And the trend is, it has been, the percentage increase that the, that the state recommend the city to provide to the school has been going up, but the, the dollar amount that the city ended up going, contributed to the school has been going down. So I don't know, and we have always been accepting it, and I don't know whether now the city has just decided to slash a bigger chunk away from the school. And I, and I think that, you know, whether you are city councilors, whether you are an adult living in the city, to approve cutting the funding from the school like that, I feel like we are taking the money away from the children, and we're taking the children's money away. And I feel that we should not be doing that. And I agree that the, whether, that the city should justify, justify why, why the city is giving, why the city contribute to the school so much less. So that's all I need to say.
Mr. Rossing?
Thank you.
Thank you. I, you know, I look at this snapshot real quick, and I know it says $3,629 are going to try to be cut from Central, but we're losing our chief of equity. We're losing our parent academy director. We're losing early college promise, a chunk of it. K-8 athletics, science idea camp, summer school, twilight after-school, Latinx scholars. We're losing, from my estimate, we're losing 25 positive behavior reinforcement teachers who are boots on the ground with our students. Here, we're, we're losing paraprofessionals. We're losing native language support teachers. You know, we're going from 31 to five positive behavior reinforcement teachers. We're losing 18 tutors, the enrichment tutors. I mean, we're bleeding from the classrooms, which is the most important part of what makes the school department go. We're not just, I mean, let's get rid of contracted services, you know, if we have to on this end. You know, I mean, we, we just started to teach parents how to teach, we just started a program to teach parents how to communicate with teachers, and we're losing that. We're losing a student activity advisor. We're losing $3,000 for UML field trips. No more science idea camp, but we're going to keep the knowledgeable. We're bleeding, and our kids are losing out. K-8 athletics investments. We're losing uniform money. We're losing a building custodian, a security guard. I mean, this is only going to hurt the kids of Lowell, and it's just sad. So I do think we definitely need a good reason why we're going to do this for our students, because that's, we're getting this Chapter 70 funding because of the number of students in this school and the taxes that their parents are paying. And now we're losing it to support them. And if anytime we needed stronger supports in classrooms, it's right now. Thank you.
Motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. I'm sorry, seconded by Mr. Conway, I apologize, to send, ask for a letter providing an explanation for the money. All the fair say, aye, opposed, motion passes. 8.2, response to motions bundled by Mr. Bahu and Mr. Lay on April 16, 2025, regarding middle school lunch. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. School committee members, you have this motion response in your packet, and we are available to take any questions you may have.
We do have a speaker as well.
Sebastian Bagheer.
Good evening, Mayor, Superintendent, and School Committee members. Oh, okay. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Superintendent, and School Committee members. My name's Sebastian, and I attend the Daily Middle School. My classmates and I read the report being submitted tonight about school lunches, and I would like to respond briefly to the report. First, we appreciate that the school department took the time to address these concerns. Thank you. Next, we conducted a survey that nearly 500 LPS students completed, and our survey showed that many students want more cultural diversity on the menu and do not want to have pizza every single Friday. This differs from the report's findings. Since there are different options, opinions, my classmates and I would like to request that the school department complete a survey for all... that the school department complete a survey for all middle school students to truly see what food students want to eat on Fridays. Students have never been asked our opinions by the school department, and we think it will really be helpful to include us in the process. Lastly, the report states that the schools use plastic containers at lunch to speed up the process of serving us lunch. We know lunchtime is limited, but we still remain concerned about how much plastic is being wasted in the garbage. Using plastic ruins the environment and hurts sea animals and their food chains. Plastic is being wasted in the ocean every day. The longer we wait to fix this, the more damage we cause to the earth. Even more concerning is how much plastic is being digested by our bodies. Our health is more important, and we want to remove plastic containers as much as possible. Please value our health and our planet's health by reducing the plastic used at lunch every day. To conclude, please survey the students about menu choices on Fridays, and please find a way to reduce the use of plastic at lunch. Thank you, you taking the time to listen, and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the school committee for passing these four motions last meeting. I was not here. But I did have the benefit of going to the daily school and have a discussion about school portions, school lunches, plastic wraps, food choices in recess time. The one thing that I did realize when I was there, as well as with Mr. Lay, who was there with me, was that the superintendent was there. He visited them, and he sort of had some very nice things to say, and they felt very comfortable with how he was heard. Also, who was there was the head of Aramark, the, the, the person that runs the Aramark program. And she, again, was very delightful and comforting and hearing and listening, and a person that wanted to be proactive to what the students' desires are. I think the first motion sort of speaks for itself, right? You know, the city of Lowell has 15,100 students or over 15,000 students, and we are racially diversified, and we do all eat different types of food. And I, if I remember, and it sort of breaks my heart to remember this, but when I was at the daily school in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grades, they were offering pizza on Fridays. So realistically, nothing has changed. You know, I mean, I like to eat hummus and baba ganoush, and I know Asian people like to eat papaya salad, as well as some type of noodle dishes. And I know Africans like to eat samosas and such like that. So, you know, wouldn't it be lovely if we could, you know, take some of these food choices that, you know, and, and make them an alternative to the pizza category? Some pepperoni pizza's great, cheese pizza's okay. Ultimately, I know there are some other choices. I understand, Mr. Hall, that Aramark sort of, you know, has to follow the criteria of what the USDA offers. And I know it can be a little difficult to offer some international foods. But, you know, I'm sure some of these international foods would be, would meet the criteria of the health benefits to the students. So, you know, I would really love to have maybe either the person from Aramark come and speak to us, or have another report on this particular item. Secondly, plastics. Plastics are a funny thing, you know? I spoke to my, my, my significant other down in Beverly, Massachusetts, and I asked, you know, how the sandwiches come in the city of Beverly? You know, do they come wrapped? Are they in plastic? Are they sort of served on a plate or anything like that? And she says they wrap them in wax paper. Now, that would, and I said, oh, that's a great idea. It would greatly reduce costs if they were wrapping a sandwich in wax paper, or some type of Reynolds Wrap, and it would be better for the environment. So, you know, it's sort of a, and I, I understand the time. The time can always be an issue of, you know, wrapping a sandwich in respect to, you know, putting it in a container and snapping that container. But I don't know that the, that it's really going to take up that much more extra time. Our students, our care about the, the environment, right? And that plays into your motion today, Ms. Doherty, about how we want to have students, you know, understand, you know, the environmental, I wish I could pull out your motion. But, but that would be so beneficial that we could go ahead and let them be heard. The students worked on this for a number of months. Mr. Skinner, I'm not sure when you were there. I know that I was there in April, or was it late March? It might have been late March. And I know the, the, the Aramark representative was there. And they weighed food, and they basically said that, you know, you're giving the same portion to a kindergarten kid than you are to the fifth grade, to, I'm sorry, to a, to an eighth grade. And it's true, because the food portions are on the second page of our, of our report. So I don't know that a, you know, and I'll, and I'll mention them, a fruit cup is two ounce, a vegetable cup is three and three quarter ounce for both, kindergarten and the eighth grader. The orange group is three quarters of a cup, and so on and so forth. They match almost identically, except for the grains. The grains are eight to nine ounces for the K through, K through fifth, but the sixth through eighth is eight to 10 ounces. It's one ounce different. Some kids are larger than others. So it's really important, these kids have done their homework. They have created a civics, I had a civics class that created something that said, that we really don't look at, and where, and where do we get our best information? We get our best information from the students, from the classroom. So as much as I appreciate you taking this time for this report, Mr. Hall, it would be great that if we could have maybe the person from Aramark come in, and maybe we could have a discussion, a discussion with them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agreed, Mr. Bahu. I, I think that definitely, every year, students always have been speaking about whether food taste, food quality, or, or food portion. Every year, they've been asking, pleading us to change, to, to make it better. So I think, well, first of all, Sebastian, thank you for staying so late to, for this opportunity to speak. Thank you very much, and mom and sisters for staying up this late. So anyway, so I, I feel that every year, they've been asking, please, please change. And I think we should hear them. We should listen to them, and I think, I think we need to make the effort to make, make modification for the food choices, and as well as how we serve the food. So, thank you.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. I just want to add, I, I think that we're really not, I think the makers of these motions were very clear what the intention was, and I don't think the report is really addressing the intention, it's the intention. It says, you know, we, we use these plastics because we have to, we have to provide the food quickly. Well, I think the response really should be, what's an alternative? Maybe it's wax paper, maybe it's something else. I understand we have limited time for lunch, but there's got to be another option. So to provide us with an option that reduces the packaging, reduces the amount of plastic, and really honors the intention of the motions, which was we want more sustainable packaging materials. In terms of the survey, why can't we just do a survey of our students? Figure out a way to do it. Each school surveys their students or however, but to get that kind of information in a holistic way. And then the third motion about sizes, so the USDA sets a minimum, right? We had this conversation when one of these motions first came up. Those cereal bars, they call Lucky Charms cereal bars, I mean, that is junk. There's not enough nutrition in those bars. There's way better bars out there that are more protein, you know, just more nutritious. So USDA, I mean, at one point, I think the USDA said under President Reagan, ketchup was a vegetable. You know, like, I, I'm not considering that. When I fed my kids, it wasn't, this is your vegetable, put some ketchup on your hot dog?
Let's not pick on Mr. Reagan.
All right. But my point is, the USDA set a minimum. So the minimum is one ounce of protein. And so the response to the motion, which was, can we give more, bigger portions for the older students, was, well, the USDA says we have to give an ounce, and we're already given two ounces. It doesn't really, if we have concerns that the older students are not getting their tummies filled for lunch, so they can come back and be, you know, reinvigorated to do their schoolwork, that's not an answer to that motion. Can we then look at, for those, the, I know you break them up by lunch, by age at lunch still, don't you? So you, the older kids, maybe they get three ounces of protein. You know, if we can do it, we have the minimum, we can do better. Let's figure it out. Let's figure out how we can do better. Because I believe we are making money off this program.
So if I may say, it's a summary that it's, it's clear that the committee's not feeling that this motion is completed. And then a good next step would be to invite a representative of Aramark to the meeting. Because even I am listening to your questions, and I'd like to know the answers as well, right? I think that many times companies who exceed, in some cases double, the minimum requirement may think that that's sufficient. Let's bring an Aramark representative here who will tell us what's doable and, and how, how we can make progress. We'll follow up in that way.
Okay. Because I think the intention is clear, what we're trying to accomplish, and I completely agree with what we're trying to accomplish. So I think just taking another stab at how we can get there, and definitely get better bars for breakfast than those Lucky Charms. Thank you.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, I'd just like to, you know, obviously, I, I completely agree with my colleagues on these topics. I don't know, Fruity Charms, I don't know, is that the worst way to start a day? But, okay. But I would like to recommend that we have this meeting in a subcommittee. I don't know which one, but it seems like the kind of thing where we would get a lot of public interest, a lot of people may want to come and speak. You know, it could be a good thing to do on a, on a subcommittee level, so that then it could be brought to the full committee.
Mr. Rossi, Mr. Rossi, go ahead.
Sebastian, I just wanted to say I love your passion for the sea animals and the environment. Awesome.
So any suggestions in a subcommittee, Ms. Martin?
Yes, let's look into it. The, the Food and Nutrition Subcommittee or the Lunch Subcommittee, there's something, there is something. But why don't we take a look at that? Why don't we take a look at that and try to develop a subcommittee? And we'll find out.
The administration can make it.
Appropriate Subcommittee, how about that?
Happy to do that. Thank you.
Yes.
How about the School Improvement and Performance Subcommittee? Chairman, Mr. Bahu.
Ah, yes!
Seconded by Ms. Martin, all the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. You, you want it, not us. All right. 8.3, response to motion by Mr. Bahu on March 5, 2025 regarding employment opportunities approved in the 2024-2025 budget, and which are still not filled. Mr. Bahu.
I thank you for this report. I see some of these titles are grant funded, and moving forward into the budget season, it's nice to know that they haven't been filled, and we'll keep an eye on them and make sure that we either remove them from the budget, or try to find some people to fill these roles. Thank you.
8.4, response to motion by Mr. Rossi, April 2, 2025 regarding community engagement council walk. Mr. Rossi.
Thank you for the response, Mrs. Legrand. I think what they were, the point of the motion was kind of to look for maybe certain schools that were doing it, but to make sure it was a choice within all schools also, that they could, or a school could have a team for it also, and getting the students involved in that way, since it's the Little General Council Walk, and kind of increasing student engagement that way. But it was great to hear all the different, all the different charities that our kids do contribute to all year, so thank you very much.
County Walk was held last weekend, too. It was a good time. Raised a lot of money. 8.5, response to a motion by Mr. Bahu, September 18, 2024 regarding Patacaville Memorial Rugs. Mr. Bahu.
Thank you for the response. It looks like the principal at the Patacaville School, Mrs. Jones, went ahead and reached out to the staff to see if they paid any of their own monies to purchase rugs for the classrooms. It sounds like nobody stepped forward. So I thank the committee for passing this motion, but it seems like it's all been taken care of, and we move forward. Thank you very much.
8.6, motion bundled by Mr. Bahu on March 5, 2025 regarding email and password access to students. Mr. Bahu.
I thank you for this report, Dr. Pinto. I highlighted, you know, one sentence here, that says, "To ensure security and any broad implementation would need to be conducted in a controlled manner on a school-by-school choice." Now, we know that our security is very important, whether it's our bank accounts, or our personal items, or whatever it is, the emails that we send, and so on and so forth. And the worst thing that any of us can have happen to us is to get hacked. And we've heard the stories. People have been hacked before. So, you know, students feel like their security is pretty important as well. So I, I, I hear that we can maybe consider doing this on a school-by-school basis. You know, it says Google Implementation and Logistics, Google does not prevent inappropriate choices of passwords. I'm sorry, you know, we use Google. Google is Google. We cannot ensure that students will be responsible with their password management. They might share their passwords with other students of theirs. We understand that. But for the most part, the students that feel their security is important, it should be something that we can offer them. Now, I know that it's very tough to offer it across the whole school system, because there's lots of logistics in reference to it. So I'd like to go ahead and make a recommendation that we could consider having students upon their, freshmen, the, 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 the first day entering Lowell High School, on their freshman, what should I say, onboarding, that we could go ahead and have them develop a password. I know that, you know, we could maybe go ahead and pass out cards, 10 or 15 different cards that have some password recommendations, and they could maybe follow those recommendations, and at least that way, they could develop a password that's going to be different from other students. Because currently, the passwords in the high school are something that can be hacked very easily. Is that correct, Ms. Prak?
Yes, that's correct.
It is. So if they can be hacked very easily based on, you know, maybe address, or birthdays, or anything that's very simple to find, then, you know, it might be worth it to implement it in the freshman stage as the students start coming into adulthood and start realizing what the security needs are. So I would like to see maybe something progress as far as that goes. I don't want it to be too much work, but I do want to protect students' security.
Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to assure Mr. Bahu that we will pursue this, that the report included some of the cautions, that like, we couldn't just flip a switch, and you'd have to go school by school and make sure it's secure and so forth, but we will pursue it. And I think beginning at the high school freshman year, it makes a great deal of sense. We will be happy to pursue it.
I also want to thank you for the report. I also agree that middle school entry might be a bit disruptive, but I do agree that definitely during freshman year, it should be looked into, because I think at that point, we should be able to handle the responsibility of having a password, as many of us use social media. I also think that, you know, we can't prevent students from sharing their password, but at least we can prevent other students from hacking, because I think, you know, we can't control students. They have a choice if they want to share their password, but it's not their fault when someone else gets into their account. So thank you for the report. So thank you for the report.
Now, the second power motion, um, security risks and considerations, um, for students to go ahead and, and, and take their emails with them on graduation. I understand there are many security risks, but I frankly, I read the report and just keep seeing the word security risk, security risk, security risk. So I understand oh highly that, you know, this is not something that can be done and that the rest of the city's, um, um, mayors should get hacked themselves. But I do have one question on Dr. Pinto. How is students aware that they can take their information through Google Takeout on graduation, on, you know, all the, all the data?
So do you know what? I believe information is provided to them in advance of graduation. So I believe a month before a school closes out, I'll have to verify that, but they are, it is publicized and they are made aware in that manner. I'll find out what the exact details are.
Yes, if you could, please do, because I did have a student that grad, graduated UMass Lowell and he did call me and say, hey, listen, I never knew that I could take my information. I didn't know that Google Takeout was an option. So it would be great that we could maybe, um, uh, give them the information and make sure that they know that that's available to them.
Got it. I'll share, I'll share what I find with the school committee.
Thank you so much.
Great. 8.7, 2024 graduation and dropout rates. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, school committee members, you have this report in your packet. We've known some of this information for some time, but the information was embargoed. As soon as it was released, we've shared this, uh, report with you. As was referenced earlier in the meeting, there's some good news in here for us. There's lots of work yet to be done also, um, but we have the report in your packet and we'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay. The motion to accept the reports of the superintendent, 8.1 to 8.7, as reports of progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dougherty, all the affairs say aye, opposed motion passes. 8.8, home education. Motion to approve the home education by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Lay, all the affairs say aye, opposed motion passes. Roll call, roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Nine, new business, 9.1, approval to accept and expend allocated FY '25 awards. The motion to approve by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Questions? Roll call.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
9.2, budget modification request. Motion to approve the modification of $617,619 by Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Conway. Questions? Roll call.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
9.3, vote of the inter-district school choice. This is the, uh, vote, uh, of the hearing we had earlier this evening. Motion to not participate in the inter-school district choice program for 2025, 2026 school year by Mr. Lay, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
9.4, art up bureaus at community schools. The motion to approve art up bureaus at community schools by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Rossi. Roll call.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
9.5, research proposal, Edinburgh at Brown University. The motion to approve by Mr. Lay, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Section 10, communications, we have two. Uh, 10.1, Lowell High School graduation commencement speaker and 10.2, advocacy, adult education graduation. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are you referring to 10.1 and 10.2?
Yes.
Yeah, so what, these are just announcements for the school committee regarding coming graduations. We know that, uh, school committee members, in particular, we, uh, oftentimes really, we take off the school committee meeting in, uh, that's on the same Wednesday as the high school graduation and many times school committee members attend.